Good afternoon, everybody. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance before we just started.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So on our agenda, these are very handy. Approve the minutes, approve accounts payable, and approve payroll dockets.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 2nd through the 14th, accounts payable, and payroll docket as submitted.
I second that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we get up to the next. I've spoken to Mary Beth already once before, but would you speak to us a little bit about what you, what we're talking about?
Sure. And tonight I brought our executive director. This is Kelly Jettie, and she represents all Southeastern Indiana, all the counties that we encompass. And we talked a little bit about what we do. We're on the front line for the children in Jefferson County. We work with the state police and the Madison MPD. And Kelly's, I'm gonna let Kelly tell you a little bit more factual information. I know you and I have already talked, but since we talked, we lost our grant that we have for our rent at the clearinghouse. So they did some budget cutbacks, and she's gonna tell you about the other counties that are surrounding us. They support their CAC. So Madison's kinda unique. And something that you guys have all heard of was Predator Net that happened last year, which we got 21 people in Madison, and they use our software and our files and informations and interviews to prosecute people. So that's how vital that we are on the front line here. All right, Kelly. Okay.
If you want to sit down, you can, however you want.
So thank you for having me this evening. And again, my name is Kelly Jettie, and I am the new executive director for CAC of Southeastern Indiana. That's the Ansford Children's Advocacy Center of Southeastern Indiana. And right off the top, here is an easy budget breakdown. The red lines are the caseload percentage that we handle at our CAC. And you can see the income and the percentage of budget. But even before I get into that, I'll brief you on the other materials and documents in your folder. This is just an easy way of understanding what a child advocacy center, what role we play in the beginning of an investigation, because we are the beginning of an investigation. Our children arrive to us from DCS, law enforcement or prosecutor's offices. And so what we don't want happening is what's visualized in this first piece, where the child talks to school counselor, talks to police officer, talks to social worker, doctors, doctors' examinations, detectives, lawyers. What is the better and less traumatic form of dealing with an alleged abuse is on the second page or the backside, where you see that the child comes directly to the CAC when an allegation is made. The teacher reports it, or a neighbor reports it, or a parent reports it. Once it's reported, DCS will bring them, or law enforcement will bring them, or the prosecutor's advocate will bring them to our center, where we do hold the state of art recording and visual recording equipment. And so we get it one time, and those typically, when presented in a case, lead to a plea bargain, ultimately saving around $1,300, all the way up to $35,000 per case, per taxpayer. Additionally, I added in a piece about prevention. Prevention is a new program that we started in 2020. It really took off in 2021, when schools were back in session as normal as they could be. And we have one prevention person who is teaching or taught over 9,000 students this past school year. We are serving Batesville, Mylin, South Ripley, South Dearborn, and, I'm missing one, Rising Sun, Rising Sun. And so I am looking to expand that program to Jefferson County. I will start expanding into Cato County. I do have a person hired to come on and help with that, so we would love to expand to your county as well, because it is a mandate, it's a state law. And the last is a set of numbers. These are the numbers, and they are tracked through NCA Track. NCA Track is our accrediting place. It is located in Washington DC, and that is through who all of the CACs across the United States goes to for accreditation. We are also going up for accreditation in 2023. So these are accurate numbers, and the first page of number is our 2021 numbers, and this is the data that these statistics are derived from. I did include current, so far this year, as your second page. And then the last stapled packet is historically, how many children have been served just for Jefferson County. And that total is 1,132 children from Jefferson County alone. However, we have served children from Clark, Jackson, and Jennings occasionally. So those are our current numbers. And the 2021 page reflects that, yes, Jefferson County was our highest caseload, but you can easily see on the other document that there, it's the lowest budget. So this red line for Jefferson County is way up here, and then the green is the percentage of our budget that Jefferson County contributes. But we, again, just to back up, we provide the child and the family. As soon as they come through our door, they're greeted by a victim advocate, highly trained, specialized victim advocate. It is a soothing and family-like setting, so it's not scary and intimidating. So children have a tendency to be nervous when they're in a police station. So it is very inviting. And we then send them back with a forensic interviewer, who is also highly trained through child-first training at federal level that training is. The interview takes as long as necessary, and the victim advocate stays with the parents or whoever the non-perpetrating offender is that brought them, because sometimes unfortunately it is the parents. They stay and help the family understand the process that's going to happen with them as they seek justice, and we also provide medical referrals and mental health referrals for our victims and their families. We have incurred some extra costs. DCS is requiring $1 million of cybersecurity insurance, which is pretty funny. Videnix is the platform that we share our interviews on. So once the interview is completed, it is put into a FBI-level, 13 levels of security sharing system, so I can see and track who's watching the video, what part of the video they're watching, when they're watching it, how many times they're watching it or accessing it, so we can troubleshoot on any issues there. We do actually work with Homeland Security and the FBI. They do use our offices. But typically, it is Madison PD, Jefferson County ISP, who comes, and we have them there in our interview room, witnessing the interview as it's occurring in a separate room, so again, not to intimidate the child. And, Mary Beth, do you have anything you would like to add?
Well, just basically, we are at the clearinghouse right now. Before, we're paying around, is our rent on there, Kelly?
It's $14,400.
We were able to bargain that down a little bit, and so with the contribu-, what is the contribution right now from Jefferson County?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. All right. So before we even start our year, we're $14,000 in the red, based on, you know, what's coming in and contributed. So we've never really come in front of the commissioners, I know they've, to let people know what we really do, why we're on the front line. We service, you know, we've had four-week-old babies that have come in, and it's very unfortunate that this is happening to them at such a young age, but it's essential. It's essential for a security, safety issue, and for mental health, that they will have a normal life. But the sooner that we get on top of the problem and get our arms around it and figure out why, for the last nine years, Jefferson County, out of 10 counties, is the highest as far as cases, because we are. And I look at comparables that are around, you know, other counties and what they contribute to their budgets, and I feel like with these awareness classes in the schools, things that they're doing to try and help. We're in the primary schools too, not just high school. And do you feel safe, or do you feel, you know, there's things, characteristics that sometimes teachers may miss. So we also train the teachers while we're there, just in, and the principals and the guidance counselors, they all kind of come in, and it's very non-threatening. And I think there's been a high yield of results from those programs, right, Kelly?
Yes, that's correct. So typically, what we do when we're going into a school system is we alert the MDT, the multidisciplinary team. So we alert the police, the DCS, and the prosecutors that we're about to go into or enter state, Batesville schools. We do K through 12. At the end of the, and we do it by classroom, so it's not a large gathering, it's a more intimate setting. And the children are given a safety slip, and they just give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Do you feel safe, yes or no? Sometimes they say yes, and then there's no pursuit. Sometimes they'll write a little note and say, "I'm not sure." We all grab those kids, and the no's, we definitely talk to. We do what's called a minimal facts interview. So we only ask four or five questions. We make a determination if there's something wrong, and then we alert DCS or law enforcement or both. And then they bring the child to the center for a full-on interview, because you need the interview the first time done properly with non-leading questions, or the prosecution won't be able to use it.
And something else, we're in the clearinghouse right now, and we share spaces with other, sometimes the perpetrator may be sitting in the waiting room with our children that are coming in, so that's somewhat of a security issue as well, because it makes them feel intimidated before they've even began their interview. So we've been looking for, you know, a place, like a home-like setting, to make them feel comfortable, like in Dillsborough and in Greensburg, someplace where they can come, because we serve them. We'll, they'll come in on Thanksgiving and on Christmas, and all, I mean, we're 24-hour on-call to serve these kids. And there's sometimes, in Madison, they will see six to eight kids a week, maybe more. The problem is with inflation and with gas, all of our, we have no workers from here. We're relying on all of our workers from other counties to commute here to work Madison cases. So that's, you know, we're trying to have, get our arms around it and see what we can do, but a lot of people confuse us with CASA, and we work in conjunction with them. We're just on the front line. We have to get them out of the home setting and into a safe place, so we can start the recovery issue for their mental health. CASA leads them, you know, at Gardham at Lydham through the court service, but we have to get them out first. Yeah.
We had six interviews here the other day. It's six, and there's some tomorrow, so my numbers will be already going up from what I gave you just today.
We, because of the nature of the work that we do, it's very, for compliance issues, and I know that you guys all know about that, it has to be very low-key, because anything that we release cannot be, you know, vocalized, because it may not be able to be used through the court system. They can throw it out. We certainly don't want to do that. But it's come to the time with our budget and the things that are going on. I think that drugs have a lot to do with, you know, the cases rising, but this is our ninth year of being the leader, so I think it's time to, you know, see what we can do as a coalition to get our arms around it.
Does anyone have any questions?
No. Shame, but no.
We're trying.
The prevention program is the number-one way to do it, to prevent it, because a lot of, a lot of children experience the prevention program. They may or may not say anything at that time, but they go home and think about it, or something happens again, and that's what we see happen a lot, then they do report. Or the perpetrator is, has groomed them in such a way that they didn't realize what was happening is very, very bad, and illegal, and horrible. And so once we talk to them about safe touches, like what's okay, what's not okay with you, and those types of things, oftentimes, we do get those kids that are like, "Hey, this happens every time I go to so-and-so's house, and so-and-so's boyfriend's uncle's cousin is doing this." And so obviously, then we report, and they come to the CAC, they get their interview, and they start their journey towards healing and justice.
It's good work you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Do you recognize maybe why some of these other counties are so low? Did the victims just not relay that to the proper person? I mean...
So reporting is really the most important situation, and sometimes they get, it gets reported, and the police are notified, but the police take on and do the non-ideal situation of doing their own interviews and take it from there. We're trying to educate all of our first responders, even our traffic police, to, if you see something like that, ask minimal amount and bring them to the CAC, and that can be one reason. And some of those counties are close to other CACs in the state, so depending on where the child is located, these are stacked by county of occurrence. So that's why you have a long list of counties, because that's where the actual perpetration happens, the abuse occurred in those counties. So those counties might have taken it to another CAC or to their own, or Indiana State Police sometime, or in certain situations of link-sex trafficking, the FBI typically or Homeland Security is made aware of that, and they take it from there. They also, the FBI has their forensic interviewers.
The deal with Predator Net, when they came in, we actually had US Marshals come in, use our interview spots to conduct a lot of us that went down. So, and we can't talk about that, but they used it in our information, and they caught them in Madison.
But thank you. Thank you very much for having me, and it's nice to meet you. I'm from Moorestil, so I don't get down to Madison all fancy down here, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
We'll hash over this.
Well, we just wanted to give you guys a chance, because I don't think anybody's ever come in and really explained the difference between CASA and CAC, because the acronyms are so close together, and when you think of funding, you're thinking, "Oh, we've taken care of that." But we just wanted to show the difference and how important our organization is, and just to let you know we're here.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you. Thanks.
I think we have Lindsay next. How's Lindsay today?
How are you?
Doing good.
So the printout from Candy Maintenance. So we had that storm last Friday. Came in nicely, quickly, and it blew a cherry down. Almost got a brand-new windows. Two guys were coming in. They were outside putting them in when it came, when it happened, but it did do some damage to our roof. So the garage roof, to my knowledge, has not been replaced, ever. Now, it was not built when the health department, the main building, I don't think, they were not built at the same time. I don't know when the garage was built, it was shortly after, but it has not been replaced. And the garage roof, the three, there's three out of the four vents on, more like the wind side, that got lifted, lifted all the shingles around it. Come to find out, they were only secured by one nail on the top side of each of those vents, and there's some sections of shingles that are missing on the garage. So when Candy Maintenance came out and looked at it, they patched it up so it doesn't get any worse. They put the vents back down since they were detached, so they didn't want, you know, future rain to get in there and get water damage inside the garage. But they also looked at the main building, health department building, and randomly throughout, there was some sheeting that had been popped, and some shingles came up, they nailed them back down. And then on the wind side of side-facing, the Boys and Girls Club, there was, they noted a lot of grain loss on the shingles, you could see fiberglass, and the gutters were brand-new. They were replaced recently though, right? I think they were. I feel like someone said the gutters were replaced recently on the health department building.
I feel like the, I don't know what recently means.
Last two years, probably. Well, they're plump. The gutter guards were not put on them. I think that needs, that needs to be a serious consideration, because there, there's no drainage. They're not being used as gutters. By the time it starts freezing, there's any issue that I could, brand-new gutters just got put on. So I had Candy Maintenance send over quotes. I did turn it into insurance, so I turned it in. I talked to Rick, and Rick turned it into Traveler, so there's an adjuster coming on Monday to look at some things. So I had Candy Maintenance send over quotes. You're gonna see two different numbers, they're for two different kinds of shingles, so there's two quotes for each roof. They did put gutters on the, on both quotes, which they didn't need to do, so I just got this today, so they haven't had a chance to redo it or anything. But they did put gutters on the, on the main building quotes, even though we don't need gutters, but I would like to get a quote for gutter guards, because it's kind of, do you see that hole?
Probably photo of those, the old ones, your four answers is six.
The old ones. The ones we put up, I don't know what those are.
I'm sure the old garage is, is boring, so...
Yeah, the old garage, those gutters are not new, and the roof has never been replaced.
That's probably the original roof.
Yeah. So to my knowledge, those probably, that quote needed to have gutters, guards, and the roof. The other one probably, it did not need a gutter quote, it just needed a guard quote.
For council, you will have to get two more quotes from other vendors.
Okay. And then, I don't know what the deductible was, but it should be covered by insurance as long as the, it's, you know...
It's $2,500.
As long as the adjuster comes out and agrees that it was some weather, storm damage, then it should be covered. And I don't see, I know definitely on the garage, so there's no question on that one, so it's more about the main building itself. And I asked Tammy, and she said it was 2008 when that roof was replaced, so it has some age on it as well. So, and I did, I looked into the air conditioner, and he said he thinks it was just a fluke. It had someone come out, because, like I told you something about the air conditioner when you were here earlier. Someone came out, and it was just a fluke that it popped during the storm. So it was just a...
You said it's okay.
Yeah, it was a capacitor.
Capacitor. That's probably what...
Yeah, so he, Joe's, he came out, he replaced it for me today.
Good. That's simple.
And then lastly, so we've done all the remodel, and I'm currently waiting. I've reached out to two different contractors to do floor buffing, because we have tiled floors, we have three exam rooms, two public bathrooms, three private bathrooms, and our rest area, break room, is all tiled from original building, and there's nothing wrong with the tile, but they haven't been buffed, and from what I hear, maybe 20 years. They, they need some love. So I've, I've reached out, but I haven't gotten anything back. I know that, I asked Sarah, and I know that we have the equipment, but Dwayne said that he was, like, that's just not something he barely gets to do at the courthouse even. So I did reach out to try to get people in to get quotes, and I haven't heard back from anyone yet, but I just want to let you know, I'm not gonna make any changes to the building, but it is something that I just thought I would note and let you guys know, that we were all candy to getting that shined up as well.
Tileboard is a lot more sanitary with wax on it.
Yeah.
It really is.
It really is. So we're looking to get that as well, but I don't have anything back. So just thrilling, just happy Friday, but I thought I'd fill you in. I just got this quote today, sent it to Sarah, so I will see about getting some more people, and I'll have him adjust the quote to not include gutters on the main building as well.
Those were just installed August 21, the new gutters.
Yeah. So I'm, and I'm gonna have him pull them separately, because the gutters will not be covered on insurance, gutter guards, nothing's happened to them, so I'm gonna have him pull it separate.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing, keeping it up. Real alphabetical, Bobby. He's not going, he's not going with looks this time, so...
That's, that's a second coming on my looks tonight. I already heard it on, but I'll leave that alone. I'll try to be fair with Rick. The first thing that I wanted to get, and I should have sent you guys an email ahead of time, I can't remember if I had you guys included on that email that I sent to council when I mentioned to them and asked for their support, and make sure that we have it in the minutes for the Community Crossing Matching Grant that will be coming due here between July the 1st and July the 30th. Through the CCMG program, we can get up to $1 million from the state towards this grant. Since our population is less than 50,000, it's a 75-25 match, so if we max out of a million, that would be about 400,000, 500,000 on ours. So I'll just go ahead and request for a million dollars for the matching grant, so we'll come on less than that. So we'll have that done ahead of getting all the paperwork done, so I can just reach out to you guys and get your signatures, once that we have all that final list. If that will be okay to you guys. I'll get you all the free money, I can't, I'm going forward to communicate. If we can put that in a form of a motion, so that Sarah will have that in the meeting minutes, and then I'll go to the website and grab that off the main bits.
You dance around the subject there, just go outside.
Yeah, I dance around.
So I move, we accept your proposal to make a grant request for a million dollars, and since we're a 75-25 county, we have to come up with 25% of the matching fund for the community crossings. Is that enough?
Yes, it'd be great.
You got that?
Got it.
I was a second.
Yeah, just a second. Yeah, just a second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I know that budget season is gonna be coming up right away. I just can't wait to get all that information gathered, just send out to us, just kind of start all of it. But I do want to put in a little bit of a plug for the guys, because as you guys know, with a lot of the challenges out there, securing good help this day and age, our profession is in high demand, as we can see with all the road construction signs everywhere that you go. I know somebody mentioned about four bridges and four detours he had to make just to get here, you know, and driving home even from deputy after a quick inspection over there on our limited box car. There's signs on State Road 250, it's gonna be closed, so there's, there's just gonna be more and more road construction coming up, and there's more and more demand for that, because all of those contractors can't secure enough help here, so. Speaking of road construction, Dole Run is still progressing ahead. We would love to see that one done a lot faster, just to kind of help alleviate some of the traffic from the 56 detour and out of the other State Road 250 detour also, that'll be kind of affecting those areas. I have received a few phone calls, even from our local law enforcement, as far as some larger vehicles that decided not to pay attention to the detour signs, and they tried to take some of our roads that are a little bit less than accommodating for the size of the equipment that they're running. So we're still trying to, to deal with some of that and continue to post signs that they couldn't read the first three, so they probably aren't gonna read the last one either. The local pavement is complete. All-Star has completed theirs. I think they even finished the shoulder stone.
I was a second.
Yeah, just a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I know that budget season is going to be coming up right away. Heather just can't wait to get all that information gathered, just send out to us, just kind of start all of it. I do want to put in a little bit of a plug for the guys because as you guys know, with a lot of the challenges out there of securing good help this day and age, our profession is in high demand as we can see with all the road construction signs everywhere that you go. I know somebody mentioned about four bridges and four detours he had to make just to get here. You know, and driving home even from deputy after a quick inspection over there on our limited box cover. There's signs on State Road 250, it's going to be closed. So, there's, there's just going to be more and more road construction coming up, and there's more and more demand for that because all of those contractors can't secure enough help here, so. Speaking of road construction, Dole Run is still progressing ahead. We would love to see that one done a lot faster just to kind of help alleviate some of the traffic from the 56 detour and now the other State Road 250 detour also that will be kind of affecting those areas. I have received a few phone calls even from our local law enforcement as far as some larger vehicles that decided not to pay attention to the detour signs and have tried to take some of our roads that are a little bit less than accommodating for the size of the equipment that they're running. So, we're still trying to, to deal with some of that and continue to post signs that they couldn't read the first three, so they probably aren't going to read the last one either. The local pavement is complete. All-Star has completed theirs. I think they even finished the shoulder stone. I was hoping to make it up there today to look at all of it and inspect it, but I didn't make that round.
366 half shoulder.
You like that?
Yeah, very nice.
That one was long overdue as well as so many of our county roads that are long overdue. We can only do so much, and we keep trying to stretch as far as we can. Community Crossing has definitely helped us get a leg up on that. We are still installing it, and limited box cover on 1450 West, that should get finished up here at the end of this week. So, that'll be completely open. That's out there in Grand Township. I'll be, I'll continue to look at some used equipment. It's just getting so hard to order and even the dump trucks that I've got approval for, I still can't place my order because they're supposedly not making the medium duty trucks yet. I did get an email today that Peterbilt is offering mid-sized trucks, so I sent that to my Kenworth dealer and said, hey, maybe I need to look at one of these old ones.
What kind of response did you get?
I continue to prompt and continue to try to push to get things in here, guys.
Any good response or just, yeah, okay?
I haven't checked my email since I sent it. At the recent IAX conference, I did receive my Master Road Builder certificate. So, that was about 600 hours of training and the completion of 12 core courses. I was able to use several of my years of experience at the highway department that counted for those years of service to help qualify for that. There are 71 of those in the state. I didn't think about it earlier. I knew my predecessor had Master Road Builder, which he actually received after he retired. Was when he got recognized for that, but I'm pretty sure Jim Olson had that too. So, there's actually three Master Road Builders in Jefferson County of those 71. And I know at least a couple others that have retired, so there's not as many of those With that, I believe, that's all I've got this evening. I'm still here in office. Piped this space long yet.
Congratulations on your Master Road Builder.
I had to put some back in use today, didn't I pop it?
Yes.
Lost a, lost a tractor driver last week.
We did, yes.
Schoolmate of mine, Danny Davis. Sorry to hear that.
Why, you hated to lose him?
Yeah.
There's not much to replace him. He's, he's done a super job. He'd left us there for a couple while, couple years while he was out on disability and then was able to come back. He said, hey, he said, I can work about 20 hours. He said, if you'll have me, I'll be glad to come back. I said, you know roads better than anybody, and you always kept them extremely good. So, I guess that was a little bit of a heartbreaking and certainly surprised us. We just never know when, when we're going to have that last dance around the sun, didn't we?
Just damn fishing at the lake the other day. You're doing good.
I'll keep trying, I'll keep pushing, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. T. Roy. Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. The, as you know, we're currently working on our multi-hazard mitigation plan with Burke Engineering, which is a FEMA funded plan review. We just had our large community planning meeting yesterday. It was fairly well attended. Not as many invitations as we sent, but it was, it was good conversation, good discussion. And it's moving along very well. Burke Engineering is, seems, seems experienced and knowledgeable, and they're, they're moving it right along. The next step is the preliminary submission to Department of Homeland Security and then on to FEMA as long as we get through that. But we're still on track probably for sometime September or so where we can get that final approval from FEMA, so. But that, that's continuing on. As I've mentioned in the past, we've, you know, we've recently taken ownership or become the sponsoring county for the District 9 Mobile Command Trailer for the Department of Homeland Security. And we had a long list of things that were going to be needed for that trailer, and my original plan was to kind of spread that out over the next five or so years and do a little bit here, a little bit there, and ask the other 11 counties to help chip in and kind of just be the coordinator for that. But that list totaled in the neighborhood of about 20 to 25,000 of what we needed to do to it. And in a recent discovery, we partnered with the District 9 Healthcare Coalition, and they had some additional funds, and they were able to free up to partner with us to get those done. So, that work that we were going to do over the next five years has all been completed and will probably be completed within the next two or three weeks. We're into festival season, and that's being, it was at the Jennings County Fairgrounds last week, and it's going to be here coming up to the Regatta in another week. So, we're, we're doing the last two or three projects in between those, those things. But the good news is, is that the total actually is going to come to about 20, 21,000. It's not going to cost any, any tax money or any budget money anywhere. We're extremely thankful to our partners at the, oops, she just left, at the Healthcare Coalition. But, but with, with their help, it's going to make that five-year project very, very minimal. We'll have it done just in a, in a few more weeks. So, we're thankful for that. And then the last thing, Duke Energy announced a small grant program that we were able to take advantage of, and we've got a plotter printer, the wide format map printer that we have in the operations center. And it has been on the fritz for the last couple of years and recently died. So, that's about a 2,500, $3,000 printer, and we were able to secure that Duke Energy money, although it's, it's a small grant, but it saved us from having to look elsewhere to get that replaced. So, it actually is here, and it's sitting off the side of the floor. We anticipate that install will be done the 30th of this month coming up by the vendor, so. So, hopefully that, that'll be rectified and done, so.
How big, how big is it?
36 inch wide, and then of course, it's a solid machine. Yeah, it's 36 inch wide format wide.
Once upon a time, the Pan and Car Department was asking for a map so they could...
Yeah, we'll be able to.
They could show where things were happening so they could let people know who showed up back there.
Yeah, we'll be able to print any of the maps, aerial photography from the drones, Google Maps. You know, we've, we've used the old printer for a lot of different things in the past, but we've not been able to for the last couple of years. So, with this, with this replacement or this repair, it'll be available to us again. So, we're excited about that, yeah, because it was handy for us and could be used by anybody. We've used it in the past for some of the detectives, different law enforcement to use for briefings before they, you know, serve warrants and different things from aerial photography, even off Google Maps, because, you know, take a, a small, specific area and you can make it a much larger map and hang it on the lawn. So, it's, it's very, very handy. It, it used to be used quite often, so. Yeah, I think the surveyor's office has a plotter too, but yeah.
I'm not sure what the age of that one is.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure. It might be a little bigger than 36 inch.
Yeah, I think it is, but. Oh, is it friendly? Okay.
Yeah, so. So, we're excited about this one. This just replaces, it's the exact same specifications as the old ones. That's all I have. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Troy.
Appreciate it.
Bobby's back. Think of something? Okay. Dave left, didn't he? Dave Thompson?
Yes, he said he had to go.
Yeah, he had to go, okay. So, we got, got opening here for some public comment. I see some publics out there. You have anything? Dave or Judy?
You all come to our meetings, and I just thought I'd go over.
Thank you. Brought your, brought your other half with you.
Yeah, because, yeah, because we're the one. And then we're going to something for the fair, so.
I thought that was her meal ticket.
No, Bob.
No, that wasn't that way.
Get what he was talking about. It's 12 months out on chassis is what we were told two months ago. For fire truck, that's about the same size. It's unreal. Our, our brush truck's not going to be an inherent in here. Next year. Any other public comment? All right, okay. Bobby?
Well, today we had the GL meeting. Things are really going smoothly. It's almost scary. They've got almost, I think they've got three cells left that they couldn't put in due to where they had to do the walls and stuff, but anyway, and they'll be finalized, stitched up, laid down. They made some of the, they had a mock-up demo, and when you saw it, all the connections in the back of the chase. That's going to be a maintenance man's dream there, so. Everything's very positive, so.
Unfortunately, we won't have that, I mean, we'll know what the old one was like compared to the new one, but probably the same guy won't be doing a lot of it, so he'll just, you kind of expect it to be that way, but you're right. I mean, the comparison between the two will be night and day.
All the contractors just got their stuff in or on order and to be delivered, so it's a, looks very good. It's very good, so. Okay, that being said, as you know, we're ongoing trying to make the animal shelter as best we can since the board decided a fence would be in order. Of course, I had a quote on it last year, and we didn't move on it. Funds weren't there. Anyway, so we mimic the same thing, but in addition, if you notice in that picture, there's, actually, this is a building here, so it's four runs of eight foot by 30, and it's in a shaded area. And it came out to 15-3, which is actually 525 feet of fence altogether. And of course, money's tight, so I've been working with Bill Barnes, me and foundation, and he's come up so far, and he's not done with $5,600 donations pledged to it. So, we're going to have to look, dig, and, you know, he said he's not done yet, but got to move on fairly quick because price is going to go up again in July, so, you know, I'm sure we can look.
I think we need it up there.
Well, the thing is, is when they're taking a dog out from the kennels inside to put outside, and one of them gets loose or away from them, they're gone. So, this way, they, even if they got loose, they would be in a confined area, and it would secure the property also. As you can see, there's a big gate here will be in the front, so. But anyway, that's that. And last but not least, I know we're trying to help the entities that stayed open. This is the, I'll give you a second. Boys Club, Girls Club, Girls Inc. And I talked to them, I thought they had closed, and they did, they stayed, they, the Boys Club broke it over here, shut down three days for cleaning. But I thought, you know, we're trying to help these other entities. If there's any way we could accommodate them some with AARP money, I think it'd be well, well spent or well earmarked. So, with that, I'll be quiet.
So, this is, is this, is this one also for Girls Inc. or is it?
No, Girls Inc.'s.
Okay, okay. Because that's what you said, and we're talking about the Boys and Girls. Kind of nice of them, but.
Big one is.
Yeah, I got that now.
Boys Club, Girls Club.
Yeah.
So, maybe we can think about it.
Yeah.
How about you, Sarah? Did something dated?
The Crawford Murphy, until they are working on a more refined estimate for the JPG study, so we should get that. We've had a little bit of discussion with the RDA, but I think they're working on some other things, so it may not be until their next meeting, which I think is the first week of July, so we've got not long, but a couple days, a couple weeks to get that worked out. So, we'll get back in touch with them to see what, what other funding we might be able to get. The water, the stormwater management, based on schedules and stuff, we'll probably towards the end of July start to put things together and have a true kickoff meeting the first week of August. I know the city has shown some interest, so we need to have some discussions with them to see what exactly they're interested in and how they're, you know, trying to fund their part and stuff like that. But, but, you know, it'd be a good idea that we're all kind of dealing with the same definitions and the same, there's going to be some things that obviously will have to be different, but if we keep some of it the same, then that would be good, so. Talking a lot about the same geography in the, in that sense.
We had a residential treatment train meeting over here today, and it's a good meeting. The next meeting will be 7/21, 22 over here at 4:00. Troy's got me approved for that. I know I'm working on. Fair's coming up the 8th. Regatta is.
The weekend being.
Fourth, second, third, I did. First, second, third.
First, Sunday.
We've got some busy community county things going on. Kind of nice. Travel's going to be at, both of them?
I was going to talk today, since he's here tonight, about the fair. We're, that's still up in the air, but yeah, we'll be, we'll have it downtown at the Regatta for sure.
One other thing, I don't know whether you saw our work down to courthouse, whether toward the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Lights. I thought joint messes between the city and county. I thought it really, island safety issue, but it looks, it looks nice, so. Tony Sorrell's, for helping us on that.
Does look good. Must make the rest of it look.
But if you go down a little more, you can find other stuff. It's like Tommy said, where does it quit? At least we got the worst safety issues out of the way, so that's good.
How about the ladies on the end? Sarah or Heather, anything down there? Wow, I bet you're entertaining a...
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all for coming.